So your plate's been full lately?
(laughing)
That's an understatement. I'm just kinda enjoying this two minutes of sitting here.
That's why I was like, that was like a two-minute power nap.
Not particularly. Yes.
I think every day for the rest of May, I have something afterward. And not anything I can just be like... But I'm going part-time in the beginning of June from my regular job again. So I can actually do what I really wanna do.
We're doing just the opposite, robbing the truck, you know, full-time basically. Just can't find people, so, good drivers.
No, I just actually, we have an ad out for rickhans. And I'm getting it's the evil of CDLs that there's no way that they would be able to do the job. Do you want me to send them your way?
No.
Okay.
Because it's just discouraging. Does it have a license? Doesn't mean they can drive. Then you'd rather test drive. Sure, get the license. They're gonna come in. Oh, but I've only tested on an automatic. And this is something new, I didn't know. But now, when you do your driving test with the fade up, you can have an automatic normal license, which means the truck has to be an automatic. You can't put them in a manual.
We have a kid that just, um... Mr. Mayor.
Do we have our mics on? Lights on? Lights on down there?
Lights on.
Jack?
I don't know, I hope not.
I hope not. Cloys? Is your mic on? Speaker?
Yes.
I'd like to call a meeting to order. Donna, thank you. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. This belong to you? Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, you may, if this will quit zapping. Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Lane?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Best?
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Here.
And Mayor Croft?
Here, thank you. Introductions, presentations, and proclamations. I guess that's mine. So I'm gonna come down and try, do I have a speaker? Microphone? The agenda item, the agenda item is recognition of 2018 AARP Tax Aid Volunteers. Each year, AARP volunteers assist seniors and other citizens with tax preparations. Chino Valley lead Donna Armstrong would like to recognize this year's volunteers and present some statistics from this year's tax presentation. You gonna do that, or I'm a... You can come up. You wanna come up here and do that, that's fine. See, you... Just do your statistics, that's what you're here for. I can say that now, but I'm gonna get paid back.
It is, it is what it is. These ladies that are being represented tonight have been working for two or three years.
Mic closer.
Mic.
Closer up.
I've never had problems here. Okay, that better? Okay. These ladies that are being thanked this evening have been working for two or three years, depending on who it is, every year, from February until April, on their own, two or three days a week. They take two to three months education before every year. And we have done some really marvelous things. We have been doing it for over fifteen years. This year, we prepared three hundred and nineteen e-filed tax forms, both state and federal. We were a hundred and twelve files short this year because we changed our location. This year, in Chino Valley, we have refunded one hundred sixty-three dollars, sixty-three, three hundred and twenty-five dollars for federal returns, sixty-seven thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars to the state, from the state, giving us a total of two hundred thirty thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars back into our community. So I think we're doing pretty good. We feel we will gain back our shortfall as soon as the community can find us and we can get some more volunteers. We are desperately needing more volunteers.
Certificate of Appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Donna Armstrong for your time and dedication, Chino Valley AARP Tax Aid Volunteer Tax Preparer, Mayor Darryl Croft, and today's day. Thank you for all the work you do, we appreciate. Marilyn Brunidge? Brunidge? Certificate of Appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Marilyn Brunidge for your time and dedication, Chino Valley... AARP Tax Aid Volunteer Tax Preparer. Thank you very much. Diane Grayson? Hi, how are you, Diane?
I'm good, thank you.
Certificate of Appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Diane Grayson for your time and dedication, Chino Valley AARP Tax Aid Volunteer Tax Preparer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your hard work. Karen Snyder?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Certificate of Appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Karen Snyder for your time, dedication, Chino Valley AARP Tax Aid Volunteer Tax Preparer. Thank you very much for your work. Linda McCoy? Hi Linda, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Certificate of Appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Linda McCoy for your time and dedication, Chino Valley AARP Tax Aid Volunteer Tax Preparer. Thank you very much for all the work. That's the boss, well. Everybody has a boss. If you didn't know, okay. Janelle Rydel? Rydel, is that her? Come up. She told one of them. Now I have all the dirt, thank you. Certificate of Appreciation. The certificate is awarded, Janelle Rydel, for your time and dedication, Chino Valley AARP Tax Aid Volunteer Tax Preparer. Thank you very much. We appreciate your work.
Janelle is the... Janelle is the lead of this team. She works in the Prescott office and has over twenty years at doing this. And we thank her.
And behind every lady worker is a good husband. Okay, we're gonna go on to item three. Call to the public. Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration in a decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Is there anyone that would like to speak at call to the public? Come right up, Linda. This is Mrs. Marley, the wife of a former mayor, so you never know what's gonna happen.
I'm here, Linda Marley, on behalf of Mountain Top Quilters Guild, and this is my co-chair, Jan Adams. We are the co-chairs for the Mountain Top Quilters... Yeah, Mountain Top Quilters 2018 quilt show. And Mayor Croft has agreed to come and give a special mayor's award to his favorite quilt. And we are here to present him with two admission tickets to get into the show on the first day of the show. And my co-chair, Jan, will explain kinda what Mountain Top Quilters is all about. But this is the ribbon you'll be presenting.
Okay. This is hard to be taller than the mic. As Linda introduced me, I'm Jan Adams. I'm co-chair of the Mountain Top Quilters Guild. I wanna tell you a little bit about our guild. We are Prescott's largest guild with over two hundred members. And we've been in Prescott since the late nineteen eighties. We are a nonprofit organization, that is a 501(c)(3), and we make quilts that are distributed throughout our community for over twenty-seven nonprofit organizations. These include, but are not limited, to hospice, children adoptive services, including CASA, family and women shelters, hospitals, the veterans' organization, including the Veterans Hospital, and other special needs. We meet monthly and we focus on promoting knowledge of the art of quilting, sharing skills, and learning new techniques. And this year, as a special activity for our group, we've included a youth group. They are young women and boys who are twelve to eighteen years old. And they are learning how to sew and quilt quilts. And they will have a special display at our quilt show in June. And our quilt show is June one and two. And it will be at the Prescott Valley Event Center. And last, it's a bi-annual show, every other year. At our last show in 2016, we had over twelve hundred attendees. That does not count our members who also attended and helped and volunteered. So those are paid attendees. And we're expecting about fifteen hundred this year because we've become very well-known as one of the largest quilt shows in the state. The only one who rivals us is the Arizona quilt show, no, the Arizona Quilt Association, which is a statewide association. And their show is also about two hundred and fifty to three hundred quilts. And this year, we are gonna have over three hundred quilts.
That's, that's great, that's a great show. Hopefully, we can get a lot of attendance. Thank you very much for coming to our presentation.
You're welcome.
And I'll be there to see you when...
Yeah, we're looking forward to having you here. You don't have to be a quilt aficionado. Just pick out a quilt that you like.
When it's cold in the winter, I'm a quilt aficionado.
Okay. We'd like to show you one of the special exhibits that we're having. This is a national award-winning quilt. It will be part of our show. And we also have a special Hopi quilt exhibit. It's the first time that we've had our sisters as part of the Hopi exhibit.
And we have a lot of members here in Chino, so it's not just question, it's all the quaffing area, thank you.
Can we see the quilt up here?
Linda? Turn it around for us.
We have a national award-winning quilt. And we're also having a collection of Hopi quilts this time that are coming down from the Hopi Reservation.
All right.
Eventually, we might, yeah.
Okay, do we have anyone else for call to the public? Hearing none, we'll go on to response to the public. Response to the public is an opportunity for the mayor to inform the public about how town officials address matters raised during call to the public at a previous meeting. We had two gentlemen that spoke at a previous meeting, Mr. Wells Gary and Chief Freitag. And it was positive, we really don't have a response to them. So we'll move on to currents, summaries, and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member, or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events or ask staff members to provide the same. Presentation of information requested by the mayor and council will be made, and questions answered, no action will be taken. I don't have anything. Anyone? Cloys, do you have anything?
Okay, we had the second meeting of the Chino Valley Birthday Celebration. Very productive meeting, people were assigning stuff, even me, which I didn't like so much, but, no, but it was good. The next meeting is June sixth at six o'clock at the Community Center.
So when is the celebration going to be?
The celebrate...
Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Celebration's gonna go from territorial days this year until territorial days next year. Oh, next year and the year after, excuse me.
Nineteen twenty to twenty twenty.
Nineteen twenty to twenty twenty, that's a hundred years.
Twenty nineteen, sorry.
That's a hell of a party, man.
We're gonna do math classes here after...
Okay, the Fourth of July Committee is on its way to planning another spectacular festivity for this year. The gates will open at 3:00 PM with bounce castles, water slides, and midway games for the kids, as well as a dunk tank that's not necessarily just for the kids. We should have some interesting contestants that all of you will want to come and pay a dollar for three balls to throw at them. There will be food vendors, a beer garden. So bring your easy up, your coolers, and enjoy the afternoon. Fireworks will be at nine. We are also in need of about eighty volunteers willing to work a two-hour shift for various activities, and, you know, just to make all of this happen. So if you're interested, you're welcome to call me, 928-237-0029. And I will put you in touch with the proper people. Thank you very much.
Make it seventy-nine, I'll help you. I'll be there, too.
Seventy-eight.
Okay, I hear we need volunteers for the dunk tank.
I will.
You will?
Yeah.
I'm good, I wasn't here, Jack covered me, and I appreciate his doing that.
Town manager?
Yes, I have a few things. First off, I wanted to say we are not having an executive session on the water tonight, but I will be having a conversation tomorrow with Bill Stoddmire, so I'll send that out in the weekly update on that. Next Tuesday at 6:00 PM, we do have a council study session. So we haven't had one in several months, so I just wanted to make sure that you knew we were having one. It is going to be on code compliance and water recharge credits. So we'll spend about an hour on each topic. This Thursday at 3:00 PM at the Senior Center, we are having our volunteer reception. So I'd like to invite anybody who has volunteered for the town to participate. We have over two hundred volunteers that we actually have a record of. And they have given us over seventeen thousand hours in this last year. So that's a significant amount of time. If we took that and just did it with minimum wage, it's over two hundred thousand dollars in salary savings. So, nice shout-out to our volunteers. And lastly, the Chino Grinder was here last weekend, it was a large success. We had almost four hundred riders in what is now being called the premier northern Arizona gravel race. We had, I think, three employees who participated. And I wanna thank the roads department for their work on Perkinsville Road and our parks and rec department for their hard work partnering with the Chino Grinder folks.
Is our HR manager here anywhere? Did she leave? Tell us about the trip that you took last Saturday.
Sixty-two miles to the Drake, I guess, pavement, from Perkinsville Road and back. And it was hot as heck. But oh my gosh, what an amazing event, the Chino Grinder is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was awesome.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's go on to item six, the consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda, be considered, and discussed separately. Do you have one, to remove anything on this side? Councilwoman?
No.
On this side?
No.
Okay, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Yes. Six A, consideration and possible action to approve the financial report for the nine months ending March thirty-one, 2018. And B, consideration and possible action to accept the April twenty-fourth, two hundred, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
I need a motion.
Okay, make a motion to accept consent agenda A and B as read.
Aye, number two.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, action items. The council may vote to recess the public meeting and hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS 3843103A3 for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public and no action may be taken in executive session. If you see that corner up there in the screen, that's our attorney down in Phoenix, so they do this by Skype, so if he does strange things, don't worry about it. There he goes, I got a smile from him.
I thought it was great, he stood up and did the pledge with us.
Yes, he did. Okay, let's go to item A, consideration of possible action to approve contributing to the Yavapai Regional Transit to support transporting children from Paulden area to Chino Valley Aquatic Center for 2018 swim fashion. Mr. Bruner, are you? And the CEO of the bus service, Yavapai Transportation, and part-time driver? Yes?
Evening, mayor and council. I'm here this evening in unison with Mr. Ron Romly, chairman for the Yavapai Regional Transit System and the Paulden Plunge. It is in regards to continuing the transportation of children and adults from Paulden to the Chino Valley Aquatic Center during the summer and continued support of mayor and council in this endeavor. Last year was very successful, the best they ever had in three years. The buses were always full, and over four hundred children were transported. Many of these children had never, ever been to a public aquatic facility. It was the first time, which is amazing. Very successful. Last year, mayor and council provided Yavapai Regional Transit with a generous one thousand five hundred dollar stipend to help defray the fuel and maintenance costs on their buses, which helped them out immensely as the transit system is a nonprofit entity. It also helped expand Chino Valley's normal bus service to five days a week. Therefore, Yavapai Regional Transit is requesting mayor and council to consider a stipend of one thousand seven hundred dollars this year to help defray the increase of costs of fuel and maintenance, which has risen in the last year. It should be noted that the Yavapai Regional Transit paid the town nine hundred and thirty-one dollars for admission fee for all the children that use the aquatic facility. Mr. Romly is here tonight to answer any of your questions.
Questions?
No, sir.
None.
Questions? Is there a motion?
There is. I would like to make a motion to approve contributing seventeen hundred dollars to the Yavapai Regional Transit to support transporting children from Paulden area to Chino Valley Aquatic Center for the 2018 swim season.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, may I approach you with just one more item, please?
As long as you're not dangerous.
Okay. I've been asked why...
Is it on the agenda?
I've been asked why in this, why Chino Valley doesn't have a similar program. And that is because the Yavapai Regional Transit works with the Paulden Foundation, a nonprofit entity. Anybody here in Chino Valley who wants to team up with a nonprofit entity to provide the same services, certainly welcome to do so. It's just that the folks in Paulden have done this. Thank you, mayor and council.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruner. Let's go on to item B, consideration of possible action to adopt ordinance number eighteen eight forty-six, rezoning assessors partial number three oh six oh four oh one nine H, approximately two acres of real property, generally located nine hundred and sixty feet south at the southeast corner of East Road Five North and State Road Eighty-Nine at thirty-seven ninety-five North State Road Eighty-Nine from CL Commercial Light Zoning District to CH Commercial Heavy Zoning District. Mr. Lerman?
Good evening, vice mayor, council. Before you have a request for a zone change from the applicant, Mr. Parsons, his property is located abiding State Route Eighty-Nine, southwest Thaly Lane. So this is basically, what this is, is a zone cleanup. The... Mr. Parsons is renting out a space for a manufacturing company. And when they came in to rezone, to renew their business license, the red flag came up that they were in the wrong zoning. So basically, what this is, is the applicant is applying to change the zoning for the use to be in conformance with the zoning district that it should be in. Seen here in the zoning map, properties surrounding it are generally commercial-heavy in use to the east, to the west, to the south, further to the north. This parcel has a history of having commercial, heavy commercial uses. The commercial-heavy zoning district allows uses that are not appropriate abiding residential units. And the type of use that this, the property is a housing is, is a heavy, more intense use of the manufacturing use. In the past, they have had uses as cabinet manufacturing, upholstery, and automobile repair. All these are heavy in use, which should have an appropriate zoning for that. So the applicant is requesting a zone change for that. The neighborhood meeting was conducted in April third, sorry, March twelfth, at San Meeting, the property owner to the north over here at the mini storage attended San Meeting. She was concerned about the traffic that Mr. Parsons' business would generate. Mr. Parsons clarified to the, to the property owner to the north that his property is accessed through State Route Eighty-Nine and his business would not generate any traffic in Staley Lane. Staff in planning and zoning recommended for an approval for a zone change for this property to commercial-heavy. The applicant is here, if mayor, vice mayor, and council have any questions for him or for myself.
Nothing. Questions? No? Do I have a motion?
You do.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen dash eight forty-six, rezoning APN three oh six dash zero four dash zero one nine H, approximately two acres of real estate addressed as thirty-seven ninety-five North State Route Eighty-nine from CL Commercial Light Zoning District to CH Commercial Heavy Zoning District.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to item C, consideration of possible action to adopt ordinance eighteen, eight forty-seven, rezoning accessory partial three oh six thirty-one, zero zero five C, approximately five acres of real property generally located west of the southwest corner of West Road One South and South Road One West at five eighty-four South Road One West from AR five Agricultural Residential, five acre minimum zoning district to SR one Single Family Residential, one acre minimum zoning district. Mr. Lerma.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, before you have a, a request for a zone change for a property located, um, nine hundred and twelve feet west of the southwest corner of West Road One South and South Road One West, um, this property is abiding Harmony Acres subdivision, Molly Ray Estates, and to the West Angus Acres subdivision. Uh, the property is currently zoned agricultural residential five acre minimum. It is, uh, approximately five acres, um, in size. It is, uh, it has a land use designation, the medium density residential in the general The applicant is requesting a zone change to single family residential one acre minimum. Uh, properties to the northwest, northeast, and further out to the east support the zoning that he's requesting of single family residential one acre minimum. The applicant, if he, uh, the, the request for the zone change is for, in order for him to pursue forward with a lot split, the way that the property owner wants to, uh, split the property is, uh, is gonna result in two one acre lots and a three, three acre lot to the south with a fifty-foot easement going through in the middle. The applicant had a, conducted the neighborhood meeting on site on March twelfth. At said meeting, three surrounding property owners attended the meeting. Um, they supported the zone request for the, for the property. Uh, one of the property owners was concerned, though, that be- that because Mr. Nakey would be, uh, hooking up to town water and sewer that day as well, we're gonna be forced to hook up to water and sewer. And Mr. Nakey clarified that, that, that's not the case. Uh, Mr. Nakey, uh, did state that he would put, uh, deed restriction on these properties for site-built home zoning. Mr. Nakey is here, have the council have any questions for him or for myself?
This went by PNZ and they approved?
This went by PNZ and they approved, yes, sir.
Okay. Questions?
No, sir.
I have a question.
Sure.
The only question I have is, uh, Mr. Nakey's intending to create the legal access to the lot by providing the fifty-foot public way easement across future lots one and two. Um, I think that with the layout of the land, it's, uh, fairly obvious that eventually the three acre piece will most likely be split also. So I'm just wondering, will, what happens? Are there any improvements to that fifty foot? What is it, what is it going to be like? So if and when the three acre property owner decides to do the same thing, it moves on through and gives sufficient access to the other properties?
It would need to extend the easement, it would need a, uh, the easement will need to be abiding the newly created lots. Usually the way that's done is, um, they create some type of fifty foot or fifty-five foot radius cul-de-sac.
Okay, but that would be done when that time comes?
They would need to submit a, uh, land division application, that would go through staff, they would review it, they would go through development services and public works.
And come back to the council?
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't go through, through council.
That wouldn't.
That'd be at, at staff level, the lot split would.
What is the intent of Mr. Nakey as far as, uh, as far as road surface?
Mr. Nakey, would you... Please come up to him.
Yeah. Mayor, Council, thank you for your time, so, um, you can see what I have there, and probably two houses immediately are gonna be built, and then, obviously, the way, when I bought this five acres, it was already, that five acre piece was just like you see it, so, um, when I, if I sell lot number three there, yes, it could be split, but I'm, I'm not positive, you know?
Sure.
Uh, but that easement would just, would just continue to the very end. I, I don't have it there now as an easement because, again, I'm not sure if whoever buys it or if it's bought in the future, if they want that easement there. And, um, so, and, and the thing is, I don't think it'll be dedicated to the, to the city, so it'll be hard-packed, um, a good road, and like I said, it's gonna be, um, deed restricted, so I envision ha- envision having some nice houses there.
Okay, but it, basically, the, the new property owners will be responsible to surface that road and do whatever that easement?
Yeah, yeah, unless you guys wanna take, wanna do that, but I, I...
No, thank you.
Well, you could, you could bring it, you could, you could bring it up to standards
and dedicate it.
That'd be, that'd be ground. So, yeah...
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you. Questions on this side?
No, I'm good.
Could we have a motion, please?
Yes, you can. Let's see, so, okay, uh, make a motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen dash eight forty-seven, rezoning APN three oh six dash three one dash zero zero five C, addressed as five eighty-four South Road One West from AR five Agricultural Residential, five acre minimum zoning district to SR one Single Family Residential, one acre minimum zoning district.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll go ahead.
Okay. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go on to item D, consideration of possible action to approve a conditional use permit, C eighteen zero zero one, for assessors partial number three oh six oh one zero zero one, approximately one hundred and twenty acres of real property located northwest of North Jasper Trail at forty-eight twenty East Perkinsville Road to allow a hot mix asphalt plant in the industrial zoning district. Mr. Lerma, again.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, before you have a request for a conditional use permit by, uh, Mr. Fletcher, uh, he has a property, um, located northwest is Jasper Lane, of Jasper Trail, sorry, which is, uh, basically northeast of the, of the town, right on the property lines. Um, he is, the, the, the site is currently being used as a mining encroaching hard rock, and now he's requesting the conditional use permit in order for him to pursue forward with a, uh, asphalt plant hot mix, uh, which is listed, uh, as a discretionary approval by council, if the site makes, makes sense for the, for that specific use. Here's the site plan that Mr. Fletcher has submitted, as seen here, this is where he intends to locate the parking, uh, for the employers. The, the portable asphalt plant is gonna be approximately eight feet from the west property line, from the east property line, a hundred feet, and four hundred feet from the south property line.
Is it gonna be fenced or any way?
Excuse me?
Is it gonna be fenced or?
We'll ask Mr. Fletcher that, that question.
Okay.
I think it's fenced right now.
Is it fenced now?
It is fenced right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's fenced now. I, thank you. No problem.
Mr. Fletcher, uh, plans to reduce the emissions, uh, which was one of the, the concerns that was brought up during, uh, the neighborhood meeting. Uh, one of the property owners had a question about, uh, emissions, and, uh, Mr. Fletcher, uh, responded that ADQ actually, uh, regulates, uh, air quality of, of the site. So here listed are permits that Mr. Fletcher has for the pro- currently has for the property, ADWR, um, Water Rights Permit, he has a Mining Safety and Health Administration Permit, that's federally regulated, ADQ again, who, uh, regulates air quality and ADOT as well. Uh, staff supports, uh, Mr. Fletcher's request for a conditional use permit. The site does make sense where, where, where he's requesting this type of use. It's, uh, all the way at the end of the town, of, of, of the town, uh, it's, it's not close to any residents, um, that are in the town limits or, or any com- other commercial uses. One of the initial concerns that we did have was that it is abiding, uh, Haystacks subdivision to the south, southeast of the, of the subject property. Um, when we did advertising for this, we, uh, we, state law, uh, request that we, uh, notify every, uh, everybody, every property owner within a three hundred foot radius, we doubled that by doing six hundred. Um, at the neighborhood meeting, only one property owner attended the meeting, he was not a resident of Haystacks. Um, he lived abiding State Route Eighty-nine. But, uh, during this process, we haven't, the staff hasn't received any calls or any emails, uh, with concerns for, uh, Mr. Fletcher's, uh, request. Um, during Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, during the public comment, nobody had a comment, uh, or concern regarding the, the project. Um, it's also important to, to state that, again, the, the subdivision is located southeast of the subject property and, uh, usually the air, when it goes through here, it goes, going in the northeast direction, meaning that all the dust, all the smells, everything is gonna be going northeastbound towards state land. The staff in the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission are requesting an approval for Mr. Fletcher, conditional use permit for the hot mix asphalt plant with, uh, following conditions, that the hot mix facility will be developed in accordance to the exhibit or the site plan that the, that the applicant submitted. The applicant will comply with all federal, state, and local regulations. Again, the, the asphalt plant is gonna be state and, state and federally regulated. Besides the applicant, the permits that he already has, he's gonna have to apply for, uh, additional permits, state and federal, and all requirement, and all required permits by state and federal authorities will be completed before the start of the plant. In other words, we will not issue him the conditional use permit till he, uh, applies for the, for the rest of the permits that he needs federally and state.
Questions?
None.
Questions?
Was there a traffic impact study done?
No, not for this.
Not for this? Uh, will Mr. Fletcher be allowed to maintain his own road then?
Excuse me?
Will Mr. Fletcher be allowed to maintain the road in and out of his plant?
The road that he has is actually... Jasper Trails is, is, is a road that leads directly to his site. There's no other traffic that's generated through there, it's just his trucks. Where there's a, a haste, I, I believe it's called Haystacks Road or Haystacks Lane, it breaks off with, with Jasper Trails, and, uh, and it's dirt road, um, the trucks that, that Mr. Fletcher's, uh, uses right now, um, and he'll discuss this further in details because I'm not too familiar with this, but, uh, it controls the dust, it has dust control.
Alex, is that a town road?
Jasper Trail? No, that's a private easement, I believe.
The Perkinsville Road is.
Perkinsville Road?
Is a town-owned road.
Yes, sir.
Dirt road.
No. I'm talking about Jasper Trail.
I'm talking about the impact on Perkinsville Road, which is a town road.
Right.
Okay. Will Mr. Fletcher be able to maintain that road?
We're gonna have the road magnate turn and answer your question.
Maybe this be better. Uh, Mayor and Council, Frank Marbury, Public Works Director. I think the best way to answer that question is Perkinsville Road is currently under, uh, that portion of the road is under town maintenance, but we will look into, uh, I've had this approach before, so we'll look into the legalities if, if he can help us maintain that road and wants to chip in and help. Uh, personally, I would love the help, uh, but we'll make sure that, um, Andrew and our legal staff and everybody are on board with it and, uh, and try and have an answer for that, but, but currently, I would say at least that the town's responsible for maintenance of Perkinsville Road.
Okay. I would encourage that to go forward because it will definitely, his plant will have an impact on Perkinsville Road, so it would be nice if he could then...
Sure.
Pitch in and...
And just, just dropping a hint, he's making asphalt, so, just saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
My kinda guy, thank you.
Approximately how many trucks a day are we talking in and out? And the weight of the trucks?
I may leave that to Mr. Fletcher to answer, if, if you don't mind.
Mr. Fletcher?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Fletcher, I live at thirty-three, twenty-nine North Road One West, and, uh, we're, we've applied to, for an asphalt plant. Uh, the number of trucks will vary, it will be depending on the projects. Some weeks, there probably won't be any trucks, and then while we're doing a project, there'll be, oh, I would imagine, six to eight trucks every two hours, so. And we would like to help with Perkinsville Road. Right now, we have, uh, charter materials also, which is the gravel operation past the asphalt, and we would like to help maintain that. We have a blade and a water truck, and we have insurance, we could furnish the town with a certificate, but Cory's right, there's truck traffic in and out of that plant, too, and we would sure like to help with that, so. Any other questions?
No, that's great.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have another question.
Yeah, I'm gonna be a thorn in this one.
One more question, Mr. Fletcher?
Mr. Fletcher?
You know, I know that ADQ also, um, has jurisdiction over the wash that runs through, but I noticed, you know, that, that natural wash runs right directly through where you're going to be working.
Right.
So I'm just curious, what is your plan to maintain it in its existing, uh, position and keep any contaminants from getting in that wash that may end up downstream?
Well, they'll be out and visit our site. They, they visit our site and they give us recommendations, requirements really is what they are, and we're not planning on going to the wash. I kept this back away from the wash on that, for that reason, but they will have a list of requirements. There's a lot of requirements for, with, uh, ADQ, the state mining inspector, M Shaw.
Right.
Uh, but, yeah, that's, and we, we'll have berms up also.
Okay.
All the tanks will be berms for the oil and the fuel, yes.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Was there input from the community of Haystack? I understand the legality said it wasn't required, I'm just wondering if, um, you said it was expanded six hundred feet from the property on a hundred and twenty acres, that's not much.
Right, but we did publish, but we did, we did publish it through, uh, through the newspaper, uh, twice, for citizens review and for, uh, public review process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I will give you a motion.
You're gonna give me a motion?
Yes. Let's see. Okay, make a motion to approve a conditional use permit, C eighteen dash zero zero one, for APN three oh six dash zero one dash zero zero one, to allow a hot mix asphalt plant in the industrial zoning district on property located northwest of North Jasper Trail at forty-eight twenty East Perkinsville Road, subject to the conditions as presented and discussed.
Second.
We have motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's go on to item E. Thank you, Mr. Lerma. Consideration of possible action to approve amendment number two to the EPS Group Agreement Providing Master Playing Services for Old Home Manor Industrial Park in the amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars. Mr. Comer? Mr. Coomer?
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of Jason Sanks. He's smarter, more articulate, but my beard is better, so I just sort of wanted to get that.
Well, that's an opinion.
Yeah. This Second Amendment, the Agreement for Professional Consulting Services dated May 9, 2017, has been seen and reviewed by the Economic Development Subcommittee, and their recommendation, they requested that we bring this to the full Town Council for their review and approval. There was $30,000 budgeted, and Jason reviewed and went through a number of the items in this agreement to reduce the cost significantly because of skill sets that he has, and I do not. The EPS group, the conceptual plans and the scope of work was determined by the Old Home Manor Industrial Committee, Industrial Park Committee, that had met, I believe it was in September, and the scope of work is to find, is to drill down basically what that property's going to look like, what the traffic, traffic study is going to be, vehicular, pedestrian access, and a number of follow-up items, including the reports to the council. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Again, I'm not Jason, but I'll give it my best. If you'd like me to go into some of the detail that's on the EPS proposal, I'd be happy to.
Do I have anything on this side?
I'll just speak on behalf of Economic Development Committee for Old Home Manor. We opted to bring this to council because of the dollar amount, whereas we didn't need it for transparency reasons.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm also on that committee, and at this point, this should be kind of the final expense of where we're going. We're gonna kind of hold at this point.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
This is gonna be a, we took this to the point of creating a good introduction to anybody that may want to locate here.
Correct, and the intent is to keep the overall plan flexible and not try to drill down too much on the type of industry we want there, because you never know. If we decide we want X and then Y walks in the door, we wanna be able to take care of Y. And so the general nature of the work that they'll be doing and the scope of work and the entrance and traffic patterns and general look and feel of the park is going to be more than adequate for what we'll do to develop the Old Home Manor Plan.
Thank you.
I'm good. Anybody? Okay. Do your thing.
Okay. Recommend to approve EPS group agreement amendment two in the amount not to exceed $21,200.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go on to IMF. Discussion, possible action regarding the accountability contract between the Town of Chino Valley Area Chamber of Commerce. Town manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. John Coomer is going to handle this item. He is our economic development project manager, and we have met, John and I have met with the chamber president, board president, and tonight, all he's going to do is talk about some of the elements of the agreement. We're not asking you to vote on it this evening. He will have it back to you in two weeks, based on some of the input that you will provide for him tonight.
Your beard doesn't look any better.
I don't wanna comment on the town manager's beard. See, I dig myself deeper every time I come up here. Mr. Mayor, Count Council, thank you for letting me come up here today.
He is brave. Brave man you are.
Mr. Coomer?
I'm the former economic development...
The door only goes one way.
Our poor attorney.
Today, we have several representatives from the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors here with us.
Can we see the folks that are here from Chamber Commerce Board of Director in support of, all right?
So our chamber chairman is Wendy McNanagall. Other board members are John Shoal, also Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Carla Phillips from Yavapai College, Kay Jones, Jeff Champ, and...
Mark.
Yes, Mark, M-Mark. There are also several volunteers here. I don't know if they're in that role, but we appreciate them coming as well. I'd also like to introduce the incoming director of the Chino Valley Area Chamber of Commerce, so I'll be out of two jobs after tonight. And that is Ms. Lorette Brashear. We're excited to have her coming on board. She'll, her official first day is Monday, the 14th, so we are all excited about that. It's gonna be a great pleasure to work with the chamber and as the economic development and project manager, they're a vital component to the economic development opportunities and process that we have in the town of Chino Valley. The, what they're asking for, what the chamber is asking for, is pretty close to being the same as last year's with a couple of exceptions. The primary differences is the chamber is going to do fewer chamber-specific events and focus more on cooperating in community effort type of events. There will be a few fundraising events, but an excellent example of the type of cooperative effort happened last week with the Wine Bites and Brew fundraiser that several people had attended, and a lot of the ladies in purple are here tonight as well. And the next, the next one will be this fall, working with horses, Horses With Heart, and then working cooperatively with the town of Chino Valley on everything from the Fourth of July celebration to territorial days. One example, during the presentation earlier, we talked about the need of 80 volunteers for the Fourth of July celebration, and one of the projects that the chamber is doing is the community volunteer program, which a number of you are familiar with. We've worked with a Vista volunteer this past year. Her name is Sarah Haber. She's been phenomenal, and we're working diligently to have a second year of the program approved to build sustainability and the ongoing success of this event, where we could easily identify 80 volunteers using that program once it's fully implemented. We also are changing the recognition for the town of Chino Valley. Chino Valley has put in $55,000 last year, and they were listed as a platinum sponsor. And our board, the chamber board, I should say, I should separate myself a little bit, but the chamber board believes that with the level of support the town provides, they should be one of the leading, the leading sponsor partner as far as recognition goes and will be recognized appropriately throughout the year. The chamber has also maintained the ongoing commitment to support town economic development activities and events. In fact, I've already met with Lorette on organizing and meeting with various existing business owners and expanding their participation in working with existing business owners, allowing me to get out there and try to bring the new ones in and learning while maintaining the atmosphere and country environment that we all love here in Chino Valley. They also are committed to routine dialogues and ongoing dialogues with members of the community. We recommend that the support remain basically the same at $55,000. Last year, the town agreed to match tourism grant from the state of Arizona, and we are asking that if you deem appropriate and the value of the volunteer program, that we would split the costs if it is approved for another year, which would be an additional $5,000. So the support from the town would range from $55,000 to $63,000, depending on the approval of these other projects. Any questions?
Questions?
I have no questions right now.
Questions?
Not this time.
There are no, there's no action required. Andrew has gone over the scope of work, and then the amendment is there, so if there are any questions in the next two weeks, I'm sure that we'd be happy to get any type of questions or response.
On the scope of services, what was that created by? Was that the town to the, to the chamber, or is that from the chamber to the town?
It was based on, based on last year's, I wrote it, and working with the chamber board, and they agreed on those conditions, and then also meeting with Cecilia to fine tune in case we were missing some of the things that the town might see of value. And if the town sees value in other things that are not listed, I know the board of the chamber is open to it.
What I'm seeing here is a lot of putting the town first versus the businesses. The businesses will then prosper when the town prospers.
Exactly.
And I'm seeing it slanted that way, which is, I like to see from where my seat is tonight. So, and I like the enthusiasm. I haven't heard this kind of enthusiasm for a while, so...
The chamber has an excellent board and great community support, and it's been fun working with them.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, chamber members, for coming tonight, and we'd like to see your smiling faces. We know it's in good hands. Thank you very much. Should we take five?
Let's take five.
I've only got one more thing.
I've only got one thing left. Joe, then you're gonna...
Hit it, Doc!
No, if we do, then these folks will leave, and then we can do it by ourselves.
Did I hear you correctly? We are not going into executive session?
Yes, we will.
Not for both.
I just want a snack.
We're gonna take, we're gonna take five minutes.
You're making Joe stay.
Joe's ready.
And then Joe can come up and... Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it.
No, please stay.
Bye, Jeff.
You guys don't have to leave.
The budget, the best part.
The budget's the best part.
It must be.
I know you wanna see it. No?
We're not gonna be, it's not a full-budget meeting, is it? I'll break his legs.
Joe, Joe, do you have slides for every page in this book? I was gonna say, if you do, I'm gonna break your legs.
Soon as we get Councilmember Kelly, who else we missing?
Cory.
Cory. Sure. Then you won't have any. Those look pretty good. We're waiting for Councilmember Mendoza. He's probably indisposed. Could well. There he is, there's Twinkletoes.
Good.
He's Suave and Debonair, I think. It was, it was fun. He did well. It was fun. Okay. We're back in session, and let's go to item G. Presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding the preliminary budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This evening, I've, of course, put on your dais the preliminary draft of the 2019 budget for your review. I also sent you, in your packet, we have just sort of a summary by project. I'm gonna do a short little part of the presentation, and Laura's gonna finish up with her part. We'll move pretty quick, though, so I'll just, I'll zip through it really as quickly as I can, but be sure to stop me if you have any questions. Overall, we're proposing a budget of $24,525,000, about a 6% increase, or about $1,400,000 more than last year's budget. As you can see, we budgeted $23,100,000 last year, and we're projecting we're gonna come out to about $17,221,000 this year. So like every year, we overbudget expenses, just to be conservative. My strategy here, these are our five major funds, and what I'd like to, what I wanna emphasize here is we started the beginning of this fiscal year with $5,702,000 in the general fund. That's that first number on the top left. You can see what we've spent, what we brought in, what we're planning to spend. We're projecting that this year, we'll end with $6,466,000. So we've actually increased the amount of money we have. Next year, we plan on spending more than we bring in, because we're gonna spend that carryover. And my theory there is the majority of these carryover funds, in this fund and the capital improvement fund particularly, and really in sewer and water, too, is from construction-related activities, our increase in building permit fees, plan check fees, and construction sales tax. But I don't wanna spend that money until we actually have it in the bank, like we will at the end of this fiscal year. Now, I conservatively estimated the revenues, and I didn't count, I didn't project that those construction revenues will continue just to climb, 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 climb. So next year at this time, I plan on showing you another slide one year forward, saying, hey, we're carrying over another $500,000 or $600,000. We're gonna spend more than we brought in, because we're gonna use our construction revenues for one-time projects. And I think that way, we won't spend the money until it's in the bank every year. So with that, this is the difference, the top line is what we're carrying over in each of those five funds. The general fund, $764,000. Water and sewer, those are buy-in fees primarily that are coming in, they're adding that much. And our capital improvement, that's the sales tax. And then, so next year, we're actually gonna overspend or spend more. So the general fund, we're spending $699,800 more than we're bringing in next fiscal year, but it's really that construction-related sales tax. So if that makes sense. And so, like I said, this way, we spend the money, once it's in the bank, and not until, so. So that was my general philosophy in putting the budget together. We kept expenses pretty much flat where we could, continuing to estimate our revenues conservatively, and overestimate our expenses enough, so we make sure we're not going backwards, I guess. So, some of the budget highlights, some of the things that we've included is, one, we're gonna pay down the PSPRS liability for $300,000. We have $50,000 in additional election costs, a comp and class study, police department's getting body cameras. It's about $46,000 for the one-time initial expense for the body cameras, and then we have about $17,000, $18,000, I believe, year after that. We've added $7,000 for additional fireworks funding. Park maintenance is the only position we're adding, and Laura will get into that. We've got $125,000 for the memory park restrooms, building a new restroom facility, reducing the HERF overhead by $100,000. So after this year, the general fund will, or the general fund will no longer be charging the HERF fund for any overhead. So all the HERF money coming in will be used on road. None of it will go back to the general fund. We're $10,000 for the 50-year celebration. We have $75,000 for the water study. The document management project, $100,000, it was part of our technology plan, and then a $10,000 contribution to the Peavine Trail for their state land easement. In the HERF fund, we have a budget of purchase of a dump truck for $155,000. $121,000 is for the sale of fixed assets, including our chip spreader. The roads and maintenance, we have $250,000 for road materials, $150,000 for chip seal projects, and 50,000 for Highway 89 maintenance. So it's about a $200,000 increase over where we were last year. $100 of it was carryover, and about $100 of it was no longer having to supplement the general fund for overhead. So we've maximized the amount, I think, that we can put into roads every year with this year's budget. In the capital improvement fund, we have $50,000 to continue with the memory park expansion, $30,000 for the Old Home Manor master plan. As you can see, we're already saving money, 'cause you only adopted past $21,000 tonight. And we have $300,000 for lighting the ball fields, so if we need a little extra for the lights, it just came out of the master plan. In the water and sewer funds, I put them together. We have, we budgeted $100,000 in water and $100,000 in sewer to put that long-talked-about building up for the, at the wastewater treatment plant that they will share. We have, I've labeled it Country West well upgrade for 150, but it's really for a well upgrade, wherever we determine that needs to be money for that. Maintenance on sewer lines, we're gonna actually try to contract to have some of our sewer lines cleaned, a portion of it, and we put $40,000 towards it. Whether that does a third or 20%, I'm not sure, but we're just gonna start cleaning our lines and start maintaining our collection system. And we have $120,000 for the drawing bed construction that we engineered this year. Couple of smaller funds, the court improvement fund, we have $13,000 for the paint, for a bay lift position, which is just a part-time position as needed, and $25,000 for security fencing. This all comes out of the court improvement fund, so all the fines that are paid actually pay for this, and they have plenty of money this year to do that. The CDBG grant for Chino Mendles Unit 5 paving, we have that, and I think we've actually gonna get a little bit more than this, so we'll be able to pave a little more. gonna get a little bit more than this, so we'll be able to pave a little more. One of the things I will talk about in detail, but this is how the transfers between the funds look this year. We're transferring $75,000. The negative is where it comes from, and the positive number where it goes. So on the top line, we transferred $75,000 from the general fund to the HERF. Our capital improvement fund, which is 1% of our sales tax, we're continuing the $250,000 transfer for the police department and $150,000 for the aquatic center. And then, of course, we transfer 800, almost 850,000 over for our debt service. This is the first year, though, that we're not transferring any money from the general fund to support the water system. So both our enterprise funds are on their own right now and cash flow positive, so it's very positive. And of course, the cash, they'll be paying back the general fund over the year. So this is about it with my presentation. The one thing I did want to have you guys decide and discuss after we're done tonight, we did have a council budget hearing scheduled for next Wednesday. And in the prior years, we basically had all the department heads come up and explain their budget to you in detail and everything. With the budget being so similar as it was last year, we haven't had really any changes, except for the projects that I talked about at the beginning of the presentation. I'm just feeling that it's probably not a good use of your time, but it's your choice. We'll come and we'll bring the whole show if you'd like, if you think it's worth your time. But you can discuss that between yourselves.
Yes or no?
No.
I know you love the budget.
Let me be clear. No.
Okay.
Well, I would do anything to disagree with Jack.
Right.
I disagree with Jack a lot.
We discussed all these items during the retreat.
Evidently, it's unanimous, I assume. Cory? That we do not have that...
No.
That meeting Wednesday.
No.
That'll be fine.
You're welcome.
Nobody heard.
Laura has about the same length presentation, maybe a little bit shorter, for talking about the personnel changes and our benefit changes for you.
I have one issue. This is the first that I've actually seen it in front of me.
Okay.
Dump truck.
Yes.
I need to know a lot more about this dump truck.
Okay, and that purchase will come back to you guys for approval? When the departments get...
Speaker. I want to hear more about the dump truck deal.
Okay.
Now that I'm recording.
Okay, so when we actually do acquire that asset, or we will bring that back to you guys, so it's not like we're gonna buy it on July 1st. We'll be able to discuss it. And if we don't use the dump truck, we still have those proceeds for another piece of equipment if that's so desired. So.
Is that okay?
It's all right.
You want first dibs?
Laura?
So there's a quick presentation. Oh, look at that.
Well, that was quick.
Okay, so what I'm gonna be covering is just an overview of the full-time staffing changes, COLA and merit increase recommendations, and health insurance premium changes. So the first slide in front of you is the full-time equivalent changes. We currently have staffing, full-time equivalent staffing of 95.5 full-time employees, or full-time equivalencies, I should say. What we're recommending is a 1% net change in staffing, which equates to one additional FTE. And on the right-hand side of that screen, this will kind of show you the net change. We've included one FTE in the Parks Department. We actually have included a placeholder in the Customer Service Department should we need an additional body in code compliance. And also, we have reduced the Sewer Enterprise by one FTE when David Jaime, our current code compliance officer, moved to Customer Service. We didn't fill that position. So those are the primary changes in our FTE count. With regards to COLA and merit increases, we're recommending a 1% COLA, or cost of living adjustment, based upon the West Urban Area's CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, and this does not include the temporary employees. The reason why it doesn't include the temporary employees is because back in 2016, I want to say it was November of 2016, Proposition 206 passed, and we are required to abide by the minimum wage adjustment, which by January of 2020, it'll be $12 an hour. So we're abiding by that. So along with the 1% COLA or cost of living adjustment, we're also recommending a merit increase based upon performance that will range anywhere between 0 and 3%. And it's based upon the scoring that an employee gets in their performance evaluation. So starting from the bottom, if they get a score of anywhere between 8 and 10 points on their evaluation, they'll be eligible for a 3% merit increase over and above their COLA. If they get a score of between 5 and 7, they'll get a 2% merit increase plus the 1% COLA. If they get a score of 4, they'll get a 1% merit. And if they score 3 or less, they're not eligible for a merit increase, but they'll get a cost of living adjustment. So the next screen, just wanted to kind of give you an overview of historical COLA and merit increases. So, and this is what we're recommending right here for 2018. So 2018, 2019 benefit plan premium changes. So we're recommending that the employee health insurance premiums will continue to be 100% covered by the Town of Chino Valley, as we're currently doing. And we would like to continue to absorb 30% of the family medical premium and 25% of the family dental and vision premiums. The Town of Chino Valley staff would like to continue to provide short-term disability as well as the group term life insurance valued at one and a half times the employee's base salary, at no cost to the employee. So no changes there is what we're recommending. There are no increases in the dental and vision, meaning there will be no increase to the employee premium for dental and vision. There will be changes to the medical premiums. For the premium and the high deductible medical plans, the employer recognized a 3, approximately 3% increase in premium. What that means to the employee dollar-wise is, for the premium plan, they would get a $17 a month increase for family coverage under the premium plan. It would mean a $13 increase to the employee to have the family high deductible health plan. So that's what it equates to in terms of dollars for the employee. Every year, we also provide qualified employees with a monthly insurance credit to go shopping for benefit coverage. That credit will cover an employee only for medical, dental, and vision. In order to provide the employee health insurance premium at 100% coverage, we had to increase the monthly credit from $674 a month to the employee to $692 a month. So it was an $18 a month increase that we provide the employee, so it's a neutral increase for them. We've also, we're also recommending a $3 increase a month to the health savings account. So if an employee elects the high deductible health plan program, they automatically receive an HSA program where we contribute currently $132 a month, and that would go up to $135 a month. So what has changed in our plans? For the premier plan, which is our gold standard plan, the deductible is actually increasing from $300 per individual to $350. And for a family coverage, it's going from $600 for a family aggregate to $700. The basic plan, I had mentioned this in the retreat, that we were possibly going to offer an out-of-network option. We are, and that's why you see that additional increase of the 3.95% in premium cost, because we are offering that out-of-network option to the basic plan. Now that we have made such, YCT has made such substantial changes to the medical plans, they are no longer considered grandfathered plans. So all three plans will cover wellness benefits 100% for children and adults without any deductibles or copays. It used to be that the premier plan and the basic plan, if you went for wellness visits, you'd actually have to pay a copay. That's 100% covered now. We also offer a teledoc benefit to all of the medical plan participants, which is pretty exciting. Our current employee assistance program is offered through Holman. They offer three confidential counseling visits to the employees. We're moving to Deer Oaks effective July 1st, and they will be offering 12 free visits for a similar price to YCT. Voluntary life insurance, we are moving from the Standard to Securian, and they are going to be offering the employees at the open enrollment, which is happening right now for effective date July 1st, a guarantee issue if they want to up their voluntary life insurance, $50,000 guarantee issue for employees, and then a $20,000 guarantee issue for children. And that's it.
Question?
Yes.
I've got one back on the merit raise.
Yes.
Concerning, has our management been briefed of this format, the formula?
Yes.
Okay.
Town manager and finance director, we've both discussed this in detail.
In other words, the people that are gonna be making the evaluation and writing up the evaluation, which will equal to a merit raise?
So we didn't specifically share what the outcome would be for the merit increases. We wanted to keep it a little separate. We didn't want the department heads to exactly know what the merit increases would be and back into those increases. We wanted to provide an environment where it was an honest, open performance evaluation, and then with their true evaluation rating, we would apply ratings with a corresponding merit increase.
Based on your knowledge and history to this point, have they been pretty fair and not inflated? The evaluations?
I think that they've been fair, but every year, we make it a point to try and tweak the performance evaluations, not too much, but enough to fit the needs of where the town's going. Next year, I think we're gonna focus more on goals, more than job rating factors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, with the, this is all in the budget, right?
Yes.
Now, and it's all okay. But how do you budget for the merit raises? Because I can see most of the town, except for John, after the bearded lady comment, getting a raise, but how do you budget for that?
That's a great question. The performance evaluations were completed in March, so we knew what the scores were.
Oh, okay.
So based upon that, we were able to kind of figure out, how does it fit in line with what the budget can afford?
Sure, thank you.
This side?
I'm good. You're nicer than I am.
The question, when we're comparing wages, benefits, do we have anything like we do for our sewer and water, saying Prescott's this, Cottonwood's this? How do we compare to other towns? Because employee retainment is a big thing these days. How do we rate? Do we have that information?
I always say that our employees are our biggest asset, and I truly believe that. Without them, we cannot function. That's why we're gonna do the comp and class study come August, September, and every year we do an informal study and compare through, the Arizona League of Cities actually puts together a survey every year, and we kind of see where we compare to like municipalities and organizations, public organizations in our population size and region. So we do that informally every year, and then I informally, through the HR department, send out just a quick informal survey to my peers.
Okay, I've seen the base pay survey from the league.
Yes.
But we're talking about on the benefits side.
Oh, yeah. Seagull, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Seagull is our broker for YCT, and they do a study every single year and compare our benefits to other benefits in the area, and actually in the state of Arizona. And we are very competitive. We actually, in my opinion, have a very generous program that is fairly priced. We don't have to go to market as an individual town. We are part of a pool or a trust, where instead of going to market with 100 lives and trying to get insurance coverage, we go to market with 1,400 lives. And with the size, we're able to manage the risk through the higher level of the pool that we're going to market with. If that makes sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Do I get a job? Sounds pretty good.
I know.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
And staff, do you have your direction that you need?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's go on to item eight, executive session. Council may vote to recess the regular meeting and hold an executive session, which will not be opened to the public for the following purposes. We will not have an executive session for the water issue. We'll go on to B, an executive session pursuant to ARS 38431-03A1 for discussion or consideration of employment, assignment, appointment, or salary of town manager Cecilia Gritman. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second. We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will go into executive session.
Mike?
Do we need to tell the...
It's on.
Can we just do it here? Kathy, can you hear us? Hello?
Hello?
Kathy?
No, I don't know.
You need to mic up to your mouth, I hear.
Kathy?
Did you turn it on?
No. I don't want anybody to know.
It's on.
Kathy?
He's on.
Excuse me.
One, zero.
Okay, she says she's good.
After the executive session, council will reconvene the regular meeting. I need a motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
Make a motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll go to item A, consideration of possible action to approve the town manager's employment agreement. Do I have a motion?
You do. Make a motion to approve the town manager's employment agreement.
Second. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion adjourn, mayor.
Second? I second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Cool.
Thank you very much. Been a good meet.
That was good.
We didn't do bad, did we?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have to come back for recording, or what do we need to do, Cecilia?
We're gonna stay down.
Hmm?
No action, we'll take it.
No, but...
Yeah, let me go see if she's back.
See if she's back there, and return the recording on, and we'll finish up and go home.
Yeah, 'cause the audience is excited.
Yeah.
You could almost go back, though, huh?
She's ready.
Okay, let's, we are adjourned from executive session. Discussion with the town manager, performance. There was no decision made, and I'm asking for the motion, Jack.
I'll make a motion adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you.
Great seeing everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.